Okay.
All right, we can start the recording. Oh, has it already started?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. So, welcome, everybody. There might be some, a couple more people joining us as we discuss. But this is the Regional Planning Commission meeting for the North Dakota Valley Council of Governments, and thank you for taking the time this evening to join us. Why don't we, I will let Jim Baldwin start out the meeting.
Okay. So, we'll have the commencement of the meeting, and we'll call for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have our roll call. All right. Start with that one. Pledge allegiance.
We pledge the United States of America.
America, to the republic.
Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, so we'll call, we'll have the roll call of the members that are present on this meeting. I'll start on Jim Baldwin, town of Seymour, the chairman of the committee. And then we'll move to, let's see, the other members. We have Gary Giordano. Gary, you're town of Bethlehem, right?
That is correct. Present.
Present. Jay?
Yes.
You're representing?
Southbury.
Southbury.
Yeah.
We'll move to Dave.
Dave White, Bristol.
Bristol. We have Keith with us tonight. Keith is with the CAG.
With the CAG, yep. NV CAG.
NV CAG. Bob?
Bob Clark, Woodbury.
Bob Clark with Woodbury. Joanna Ragusa is with us from the CAG. NV CAG.
Yes, Joanna Raguski, NV CAG.
NV CAG. We have Mark from the NV CAG.
Good afternoon, Mark Nielsen.
Do we have anyone with us that's not on the video?
Marcus Plymouth, do you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good.
Here we have Plymouth joining us, and anyone else is joining us is not in the video.
Richard Crowther, CAG. NV CAG.
Okay. NV CAG. Anyone else? Okay.
And I just want to let you know, based on our roll call and our current amount of quorum, our quorum is a simple majority of 11, which is six, and we, one, two, three, four, five, and we do have six people tonight.
We have six people. We do have a quorum. We do have a quorum. All right. Is there any members of the public that wish to have comments tonight, today's meeting? Do you have any members of the public joining us in this meeting that wish to have comments? And we have no members of the public that wish to have comment. Okay, we'll close public comment. Item two, administrative items, will have the adoption of February 4, 2020 meeting. Do we have, did everyone review the minutes? That might have been at that meeting. And can we entertain a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Okay, that was second, motion was made by Gary, I believe, seconded by Bob.
Okay, got it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Show that carry. Six, zero, zero.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What about the minutes of December 10th and June 25th?
Joanna, were those minutes ever adopted?
That's a good question. I didn't go back that far. How about if I can address that at a future meeting?
Joanna?
Yes.
The December meeting minutes were not adopted according to the minutes of February 25th.
Okay.
Anyone prepared to review? Has everyone reviewed those? And anyone prepared to make a motion to adopt those minutes?
I think we need to amend the agenda in order to do that. First have a motion to amend.
Okay. All right. Does anyone care? Go ahead.
I move it, yes, I move the change to the agenda to allow voting on the minutes of December 10th, 2019, and June 25th, 2020.
The motion is made. Can we have a second to that motion, please?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dave. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion's carried. Six, zero, zero.
Okay, so we still have a motion for, we had a first and a second for the February meetings. Shall we put that out first?
Yes, we have, we had for February 4, 2020, we had a motion and a second, and that was approved.
So that's approved. Okay, got it.
So can we have a motion for the December?
I move the minutes of December 10th as presented.
The motion is made.
FYI, we do not have a copy during, that I distributed for this particular meeting.
Does anyone, well, we have a motion. Does anyone have a second to that motion before we move to discussion?
I'll second it.
All right. We've got a motion and a second under this discussion. Does everyone have a copy or familiar with those minutes?
Well.
Is everyone comfortable in a vote? Can we call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Anyone want to abstain? Motion's been moved to accept the minutes of the December meeting. Six, zero, zero. Is anyone prepared to make a motion? Joanna, what was the second part of that was June?
The June, I did include it in the packet that I sent out. It's June, hold on a second. June 9th, 2020. There were only two people who attended, so I didn't think it was going to be requiring a motion, but...
June, June 9th.
Is that what you were talking about, Bob, June 9th?
Yes. Yeah. I misspoke when I said the 25th. I meant the 9th.
January 25th.
If they, if they've been distributed, a motion would be in order if the committee decides to accept. So, motion would be in order.
I move, I move the minutes of June 9th, 2020.
Okay, motions were made to accept the minutes of June 9th, 2020. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Dave. All right. Any discussion on that?
Okay, quick question. If I abstained because I wasn't at the meeting, you're going to be approval, going to get approval of these minutes, or do you want me to vote?
You don't have to abstain if you weren't there.
Okay.
Right, you do not have to. So, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any further discussion on that? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved.
If I understood correctly, Gary Giordano abstained, correct?
No, Gary.
No, I voted, yes.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Six, zero, zero.
All right.
All right.
He's in business, doesn't he?
There you go. Good job, everybody. Item two, under B, we go to referrals. I'll refer, I'll go to Joanna for the referrals.
And I will pass that on to Keith Rosenfeld. He's been doing the referrals through, from June through current. So...
Okay. All right, Keith, go ahead, take it away.
Okay. Since that period of time, the NV CAG has received and responded to 19 referrals, including ones from Watertown, Thomaston, Newtown, Shelton, Wilkit, Orange, Monroe, Southbury, Roxbury, Middlebury, Meriden, and Waterbury. And I wanted to concentrate on those referrals, actually from NV CAG communities. Watertown had two referrals. One for a re-subdivision of land of six properties. And, and the other one was assorted zoning regulations to allow for, for some other properties to go, excuse me, to a higher density residential from an R-30 to an R-12. In Thomaston, there were two text amendments referred to us. One for an expanded downtown development district, and one was to permit temporary outdoor dining for the duration of the state of emergency. Shelton came in with also a text amendment for amendment for special exceptions for multifamily development. Wilkit came in with one, and this was a little controversial, but it was having the town council approve the ZEO's appointment, the PZZ appointment of the ZEO. Southbury had two also, adding additional accessory, additional language for accessory apartments, and also adding language for special exceptions to add breweries, distilleries, wineries to their, for economic development purposes. Middlebury added a text change for residential transitional living arrangements, and Waterbury did a text amendment to allow for e-commerce fulfillment and distribution center. Again, we had 19, 12 of those were original, originated from the PCCs themselves, and seven came out of private citizens. And that's our report. If you have any questions or on individual ones or the process, I'm here to answer any of those.
Keith, it would seem, it would seem that all the referrals that you just referenced are really a sign or a signal of the times that exist. I didn't hear one thing that was, everything seemed to be the new type of developments that communities are looking for. Can you comment on that? Do you see anything that's, you know, that, you know, of old? Or do you feel it's mostly the new, the new way of communities changing their zoning regulations?
I would concur to that. Many of these zoning regulations have been amended in order to create economic development, economic development that didn't, that didn't exist in their towns before, adding different types of housing arrangements. And I, I think, I don't know, oh, yeah, with the accessory apartments, with transitional, things like that, and with also economic development as it relates to expanding a downtown district. I would say, yes, you're absolutely correct.
Was there any negative comments back from any of the referrals from the CAG?
No. Nope, none.
Are there any questions for Keith on any of the referrals, specific referrals?
No.
All right. Well, thanks, Keith, for the update on the referrals.
Very welcome.
Having no other comments, we can move to any correspondence that may have been received.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you guys know a little bit about the correspondence. So, there were two major pieces of mail regarding the Regional Planning Commission. First off, Middlebury's Brendan Brown resigned from, as the RPC representative for Middlebury. And also, that was at September 2nd, I believe, was his letter. And also, at September 30th, the CAG received another resignation letter from Watertown's Mark Raymo. Last year about this time, Mark had already told me that he was going to, he verbally, through an email, said he was intending to resign and would follow up with the letter. Finally, he's followed up with the letter. He hasn't been attending in the last year, so I, the Watertown had lost its voting privileges anyway. So, that's, those are the two major pieces of correspondence.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to the roundtable discussion of local activities, municipal land use and processes. Why don't we kick that off? We'll go around. I see Stacy has joined us. Stacy, you're the representative from which town?
Thomaston.
From where?
Thomaston.
Thomaston, okay, great. All right.
Hang on, one minute.
Okay, so let's, let's kick that off. If anyone has to add, let's start with Gary. Gary, do you have anything to add?
No, not really. Our local activities have been kind of very mute because of the virus. I know our, our planning commission is working on a plan of development, which I believe probably start going to public hearings around the first of the year, so that's about it. Short and sweet.
All right, thank you. Jay?
Same here. It's a very quiet community. We had a wonderful, it was an apple festival from the congregational church, and it was very well turned out, and they have expanded it greatly from other years. So, that's about the only event that attracted lots of people from the community.
Okay. So, Stacy, wanna...
My apologies. Like others have said, it's fairly quiet. We're, we're working on some text amendments, and we, we have had a few good things happening. You know, it's got postponed with all the COVID stuff, but hopefully, our new brew pub is going to be opening within the next month or so. They're hoping to. We are looking at some amendments potentially to our home-based business regulations in an effort to maybe where it makes sense, possibly make it by zoning permit instead of by special permit. And that is directly coming out of some people in the COVID situation looking for ways to do what they're doing from home. We're still in the middle of a public hearing regarding the expansion of our downtown development district, and again, the outdoor dining, we are, we had done that slightly in advance of the executive order from the governor, and we're looking to extend that indefinitely now to help where we can for, not that many are interested in it, but for those that are, so that they can do it. And that's really kind of where we are.
All right. Thank you, Stacy. David?
We've got two things that I can report in Bristol. We're looking to add zoning regulations concerning outdoor dining for our BG district. Currently, we have included language for the outdoor dining by right for the downtown business district, but we want to include the BG zone as well.
What is a BG zone?
Excuse me?
What is a BG zone?
The general business zone.
Oh.
The second thing is that we are putting out an RFP to have, have a company help us rewrite our zoning regulations, updating them, putting them in perhaps better, more understandable language, not, not changing any of the regulations, but just making them a little bit clearer to understand. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Bob?
The, the town adopted the POCD earlier this year. The zoning commission is working on changing its regulations in conjunction with a, the same consultant that worked on the POCD, but because of the epidemic, we had to have virtual meetings, having had only one live meeting in person. The other virtual meetings, according to our chair, don't allow themselves to much progress, so we are slogging along, well behind schedule, but still hoping to have a new set of regulations by year's end. But everybody should cross his and her figures for that event to occur. Other than that, that's pretty much the way it is in Woodbury. Not much in the way of land use activities.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Anyone else that I can't see on video that may be joining us by just audio?
Here's Marcus from Plymouth.
Marcus, oh, please, you're up, please.
Same thing here. It's been very quiet. I have to say, I really like putting public hearing notices on the website, rather than putting it into the newspapers, and I think it's actually far more effective in terms of making people aware that a public hearing notice, a public hearing is coming up than the newspapers. I don't know how many people really actually look for legal notices in the newspapers versus going to the town website. It's a much more convenient option. I don't know what your experiences are.
I would agree wholeheartedly with that, but I, from my understanding, the legislature has not made a determination, or they have determined that, that it's still to be done the way we've been conducting it, but it would be a great thing if the legislature would allow the notice to be on the website. I'm totally in favor of that. Seems no one reads the print news anymore.
Well, it's just so much more convenient than the print news and looking for something on the, you know, each morning checking to see whether a legal notice is posted. It's just, you know, if you, it just doesn't, it's the only thing that's...
Joanna, do we have anything, do we have any correspondence through any legislature that would, that would reflect that if, if the committee, if the Regional Planning Commission would be in favor of that? Do we ever make a, any kind of notification of our position or what our position?
That never came up. That never came up. But we can bring it up over in the other, number, item number eight, if you want to...
Yes. Okay. Very good.
I'll remind you.
I do have another question that has arisen, but not with my commissioning yet, is that I've been getting a complaint from a neighbor who lives by a lake, actually lives on a lake. We have two lakes in, in the town, and they're objecting to the fact that the first of the cottage slash house next door to them gets rented out on a weekly basis by people. And they're trying to tell me that it's tourism, and in a sense, it is tourism. And that they saying that, well, that's transient neighborhoods, and I was curious whether other towns have dealt with people objecting to houses being rented out by neighbors. Now, in a regular neighborhood, the chance that someone's going to rent out a house for a week is pretty low, but if you, if nonexistent, but if you happen to live on a lake, then suddenly, the lake becomes a place to resort. And if you start, how do you start regulating? And I can see that we have regulation that says that if you start renting rooms and running a bed and breakfast, you need to get special permit approval. But what do you do with people if they're renting a cottage on a weekly basis? There is flip side of, about people's ability to earn money from their, from their libertarian point of view about renting. If they own a house by the water, they may decide that they're not going to use it all summer long, or they may decide, you know, and they start renting it. And this is a tip, this is, this may be news to a town like Plymouth, but that's the old, that's how people make money and livelihood in places like Madison, Old Saybrook, Westbrook, et cetera, et cetera. I would assume that that's even possible in a place like Litchfield with Lake Phantom. I just don't know if anybody else has dealt with this situation. I mean, it becomes very intrusive to start saying, well, how are you renting your house out? Or in a situation where I own a house, it's my second home, or it's owned by the family, and there's an agreement that Sister Sue gets it the first week of the month, Brother Bill gets it the second week, Brother Jim gets it the fourth, third week, and everybody comes down for the fourth week.
Well, I would, I would, I would say I have not had specific interaction with a problem like that, but I would say that's a very, a question that will probably would be best answered by your town council, because I would feel if the, if it's still owner occupied and they decide to DROB or rent that out, I think that, that would really be an interpretation of, of occupancy. So, that might be something your commission would want to bring up to the, to your council.
Marcus, I'd be happy to talk with you offline on that. I used to work in Warren, and we had a big deal with that out around Lake Waramuck.
Okay. I will.
Jay? Yes.
Thank you.
I'm not quite clear. Is it the lake that makes this use questionable? Because there are so many Airbnbs that are on lakes. I mean, you look at the rentals, look at the properties, and they're, they're everywhere. All of the lakes have Airbnbs on them. So, from that standpoint, it seems hard to, to see what legally would be wrong with them. I have an Airbnb. I have a 1795 house, and next to it is the carriage house. And that, I've made into a wonderful rental, and it's solidly booked. I have two acres of land, which everybody has parties on and weddings, and it's just a wonderful opportunity for people from New York to come up and have a wonderful time and to get out of their, their town. I have a strict policy of making the house safe. All of my rules require that everything is sanitized before they come, and that we don't even have face-to-face contact. The keys are, the doors open, the keys are there, and if we, if we pass each other, it's with masks and waves. So, I, I'm baffled about why it would be a problem to rent a, an empty house on the lake. If I could find an empty house here in Southbury, and it was available for me to use, I would, I'd put an Airbnb into it.
We had a lot of issues with weddings being held, buses coming and going, clogging up the road, trespassing on other adjacent lakefront properties, tossing garbage, parties all hours of the night, those sorts of things.
And I have regulations, no parties at night. I have, you know, they're, they're, and the parking is, you know, I don't get that many cars. I think I had 12 cars for a wedding, and they were all parked on my property.
Well, I think any, any time when you have any kind of event that has trespass or anything like that, it still remains in the civil, a civil action, where the municipality does not have to, you know, weigh in on those things. There are certain things that, to Jay's point, you run a great operation and everything else, and then there'll be some that may run in a little bit. Well, if they're subject to that, they always have, they can call the police department if it's a trespass, if it's a parking issue, they also go to their safety officer, which is usually the police. But Bob, did you have to comment on that?
Yes. Last year, this issue came up in Woodbury because there were a couple of people in town renting out rooms in their homes, and we told them that they really couldn't do that. And they said they understood, they weren't, they too were trying to make money. But the issue we had, especially when the house was empty...
issue we had, especially when the house was empty, was that it was taking business away from a local motel and our local inn, or inns, I should say. And at a meeting back in early 2019, at the awards dinner, speaker addressed the issue along those lines, saying that people were renting out rooms, renting houses, but were not paying, or not getting the tax and paying the tax that they should have had, and that this was undercutting business from hotels and inns and motels. If, if they do it through an organized, an organization, those taxes are withheld automatically by them, and your booking is automatically, has that deducted. So, you know, the other thing is that the hotels seem to be going out of business all over the place, the, the big hotel, the big hotel here in Southbury is no longer in business. I rest my case. Yeah, I mean, you're, you're absolutely right about that, but that's a hard one to try to see how you're going to get people coming to, to hotels or any kind of a, an overnight stay.
Well, I think that, I think that a assessment would have to be made automatically is if you have a residential situation, you're in a residential zone, how it affects that, that particular piece of property when someone goes out and puts it out in any kind of commercial venture. We did have a, a home that was renting rooms, and they advertised themselves as a inn in a residential neighborhood. We were able to successfully terminate that because they were operating by their own admitting a commercial activity in a residential zone.
That would be a definite zoning issue, yes.
So these, these things are kind of the new, the new way, I mean, right now, you can DROB, you can even, people rent their cars out, they'll leave the key on top of the tire, and you can go through the internet and go up to a property and drive away with someone's car. So I guess this issue is, is still to be debated, and, you know, each town can share their experiences with it, but I think right now, I don't think there's any single, you know, answer to it right at the moment. Each town has to look at it.
Yeah, it's a nice 15% return to the state, so that's helpful.
Right, right. Okay, is there any other, I'm sorry, you want to continue on with anything from, from the, from that perspective?
Oh, not me, I'm fine, thank you.
You're fine, okay, is there anyone else?
Hey, Jim, how about Seymour?
Okay, Seymour, Seymour and the surrounding, from what I understand, the surrounding valley communities are experiencing, even through COVID, a little bit of an uptick. We are getting a tremendous amount of real estate activity through, through the area, people are seemingly coming out of New York and other areas, so real estate activity has picked up quite a bit. We do have some single-family development happening, multifamily seems to be the big, big winner here throughout Seymour and the valley, and Seymour's just approved a large, a affordable housing plan, so, which is about, I believe, 90 units. So there has been quite a bit of activity, and, you know, it seems to be, can't put my finger on it, it's not the normal activity that we probably all see, but as I mentioned before, it seems to be a lot of, a lot of things that are just going with the, with the signs of the time. So that's about it, but, you know, I see it pretty much throughout Seymour and Beacon Falls and some of the other valley communities.
I just want to recognize, there was someone who just joined us on the phone, could you please identify yourself? You'll have to unmute. The person who just joined us on the phone, I think they-
Joanne, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, who's calling?
Nicole Signoli.
Hi, Nicole, thank you for joining.
Thank you, I'm gonna put you back on mute.
Nicole is joining us from Derby.
All right, Nicole, Nicole, we're just in the roundtable discussion, is there anything you'd like to add to the activities in Derby?
Not at the moment, I know, I have, we haven't had any, with COVID, it's kind of hard to get all the details in. At the library, we're a little bit more separated than being in City Hall, so it's a bit difficult.
How's the, I noticed there's still more demolition in your Main Street corridor, it's moving along, has there been anything that's advanced in redevelopment?
No, I don't know, I, I, Board of Alderman meeting will be next Thursday to know if there's anything new for the south side of Main Street. I know that they were, that had started two weeks ago, but I have, I don't know anything more about that than when we met a month ago for the Board of Alderman meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So finishing up on the roundtable, we can move to the discussion, the Regional Planning Commission restructuring. Joanna, I'll bring that over to you. Up you have on mute.
Sorry, thank you for reminding me. So we haven't made any progress since the last meeting in June when we discussed it, and what, what I had also in our packet, recirculated what we had written back in February. The major changes that we're still proposing, and we haven't brought this before the Regional Council yet, the referrals to become a staff function, membership would be the first and foremost, the professional planning and zoning staff, or whoever the municipality chooses, as long as they're an elector or someone who's working in a planning capacity. The meetings we would, we're proposing to go quarterly, the quorum would be six appointed representatives or alternate from six different municipalities, and the main duties of the RPC would be the review of regionally significant development proposals. So instead of looking at each referral one by one, we would still circulate the referrals to all the planning, regional planning commissions, but we wouldn't ask you guys to approve or disapprove each, each particular one. And the other one would be the development of a recommendation concerning the regional plan of conservation and development. Given COVID and more availability of virtual meetings, is there anything else that you guys would propose regarding the Regional Planning Commission? Do you still agree with those points that were made in February? Since there are more people at the table today, I was hoping to get a little bit more wider opinions.
I agree with the points that were made in their entirety. Anyone, anyone else have anything they, they'd like to discuss on that, or add to?
Not I.
I would agree with you, I wasn't at the meeting to discuss it, but it seems very straightforward and logical. I have a question regarding the direction of the interaction in terms of its primary movement, whether it's from COG to the municipalities, or whether it's from the municipalities to COG.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
Well, in reading this, I get the sense that the municipalities are somewhat in the dark, that they don't seem to appreciate what COG has available to it, but that COG doesn't seem to be making an effort to reach the communities. I know in the case of Woodbury, we've had positive interaction between the two groups, but in reading what's on this sheet of paper, I just don't get the sense that there is real ongoing interaction, that it's, oh, well, yeah, maybe someday, yeah.
Bob, I, I agree, I agree 100% in what you just said, I think you touched upon the main issue, and I'm wondering myself, how many first electmen and/or mayors have actually gone and, and made a decision on how their communities will best utilize the COG? I know in Seymour, we are actively using Keith, who's with us tonight, as a town planner. It's a tremendous asset to the town, it's a cost-saving, you know, Beacon Falls has joined on with that, I believe Oxford was, and I can't say enough how well this is working, and I would like to see this expand in the future, so the COG is an integral part of all the members in the communities, and I believe it starts with the top elected official to, you know, realize the advantage of this. To Bob's point, if this is to be done, then it works both ways. We not only have the resources of the COG from the top down, but we have the resources of the COG at the assistance to the municipality. So I would encourage anyone to speak to their top elected official and say, hey, look, this may be a good thing for our town, let's look into this further. Does anybody have anything to add to that?
I agree with you wholeheartedly on that, you've got to start at the top and, and get them apprised of what this can be, and that, that's a problem here. They, they've been very passive about it.
Thanks, anyone else? Anyone else that has any feedback, maybe how their municipality views that point that Bob made?
Well, I think that maybe it'd be good if the, and because people like Joanne and Mark come to a PNC or Planning Commission meeting and introduce themselves once a year, I mean, we have, we meet once, mostly twice a month, but I don't, I'm sure, my commission doesn't even probably know you exist, because I deal with you, but I, they would be informative for them to know that there, you are there, and the only way to do that is for them to see you.
I know that, that, that was mentioned, she's, through last year and everything else, Joanna, I remember, remember that comment, prior, prior.
And, and you're talking about, Marcus, just, just to, just to make sure that I'm understanding you, you're talking about even attending like these virtual meetings?
Yeah, I mean, you, you would simply, you know, it would be arranged that the N B C would be a, an agenda item on that night's evening, and you're talking about what you do and your, you know, your plans, and, you know, how what they're doing fits into the larger picture, because I know my commission is very, you know, they react to projects, you know, they get a site plan, that's what they do. You know, that's, they don't really see the bigger issue. I mean, I've had, and I know that they don't often get the bigger issue, and I've had disagreements with them on, especially when it came, comes to the village district, you know, they have this notion that, that the village district, you know, is some sort of magical regulation that brings money and wealth into the town, and that that's why, that it's not, the regulation's not working, that's why our downtown isn't, you know, isn't the booming, bustling village center, it's like, no, not because of the regulation, it's a market issue, that's why it's not working. The regulation's there to enable you to be able to have an effective development review and get your point of view and try to direct things into getting to look like a certain way or function that way, and it's like, oh, well, it's failing because we've got this ridiculous regulation, and it's like, no, it's because there's a market for it. That's why it's not functioning, not because of the regulation.
So what, what the COG could bring is more of the, the larger scale view, like-
That's right.
The 10,000 foot view instead of the 5,000 foot view?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, you know, they're players within a larger picture, and it's the larger picture that pushes things. And I don't necessarily know that they ever see the larger picture, because they may be very, you know, town-oriented, that, that's what their world is, I don't mean to sound provincial, or, I, I just think that that's, they don't, they don't necessarily see the larger picture. And like right now, I think the biggest part of our larger picture is what the COVID is doing to, two things, I mean, one is the Amazonization of retail, and then now what has COVID done to the way we operate many of our businesses? You know, it looks like ConDOT is being able to function quite well without people even going, having to go into, into New England. If you don't need office buildings, you don't need architects, if you don't need art, you know, if you don't need office buildings, you don't need development.
Okay, thanks, Marcus.
All right, yeah, thank you for the comment. Anyone, anyone else have any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to add something along that line, and part of it has come about because of this need to meet the way we are meeting. I could see, for example, picking up on the village concept, or some, any other COG developing a presentation that could go out to each and every municipality, to a planning, zoning meeting, make that part of the agenda for that, that night, and just, same thing goes to every, every community, so that, first of all, every community knows this is one of the things that COG does, and secondly, that the same message is going out throughout the entire area, there's no misunderstanding. And then perhaps some, after this is done, perhaps a get-together of the various community groups and an interchange, exchange of ideas. It just seems to me that it's a way of extending the value, if you will, or making the value, making the individual communities aware of the value of COG.
Thanks, Bob.
I, I would agree again with Bob, and the only thing that I would add to that is that, not only to the planning and zoning commission, but again, to the, to the elected official, the top elected official, selectman or mayor, again with this, because we're all members, we're all on this Zoom call for a reason, we're all, we're all doing this representing our town, but it seems that the top administrations forget that, you know, they also are parts of it, and we are just a, an extension of, of the council of government, and they seem to extract what they want to extract from the top level, and they leave a lot of their commissions and members in the dark. So, you know, when the, when it comes from the top down and says, hey, guys, this is what we're a member of, this is what we, we can and are a part- a member of, this is what we can and are a part of, and can even sign up for more, for more resources. And I see a tremendous amount of, you know, I don't know what the word is, but a tremendous amount of non-action by our elected officials in this case. I know from the town that we had a first electman who saw the value of it and put the money in the budget. And we're reaping the benefits of it. I would encourage every other town, but I don't know why, for the life of me, some of these other first electmen and mayors have not done that. I just leave it at that. I don't know why they would do that. Unless they have, you know, unless you have staff, complete professional staff already on board, and then at that point, I could see it. But most of our communities are like struggling with budgets, looking to how we can regionalize and how we can, you know, get our services and keep the costs under control. And COG is a very good part and a very good resource for us.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, so, Joanne, you touched on discussion of the regional conservation and development plan, item five.
Okay, so we're moving on to item five, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
So, another thing, we just have not had any progress on this in the last few months. I personally have been working on emergency management type issues. And what we have, when I spoke with Mark Nielsen a couple, three weeks ago about this, we're pretty much working in piecemeal. So we're still right now working on the, every year we come out with a regional profile that's based on census, updated census data. We're working on that right now. We're working also on a regional sustainability plan, which hopefully will incorporate all of this. And just the other week, there was a regional plan from Lehigh Valley that Mark Nielsen had shown me as another approach toward the regional plan of conservation and development. So all I can say is I think our next target date is, again, we're moving it into 2021. Mark, I'm going to ask you, do you want anything you want to add about this?
No, I think you covered it pretty well. Again, it's, you know, I don't like to keep playing the pandemic that we're in, but unfortunately, in this case, Joanne has been moved and shifted from the regional POCD and, you know, really concentrating on the long-term recovery committees and the emergency management. You know, the NVCO is working with the Shelton Economic Development Corporation, they got a EDA grant to look at economic recovery for the North Cog Valley Economic Development District, which covers pretty much the entire region. So we're going to be doing a lot of work with them. And then, you know, working with the other COGS, we're putting in a, we did submit an application, EDA, for, you know, to do more of a statewide effort. So, you know, unfortunately, that is going to be taking a lot of Joanne's time over the next couple of years. But the good news is, we are looking to hire another regional planner at the COG. And if that comes about, that person will, their responsibilities will be to work on the regional plan of conservation and development. So hopefully, next year, we'll really start working on it in earnest. But sort of like Joanne mentioned, is we're sort of changing the focus a little bit, because we do a lot of work in other areas, transportation, sustainability, the environment, the brownfields is a big thing, economic development is something we're going to do. And what we're hoping to do from all these different parts, we're going to bring it together into a comprehensive plan that will be our POCD. So I think that's sort of the approach. And, you know, again, I gave Joanne the Lehigh Valley example because I thought their approach was really pretty good because it really tries to blend everything together. And instead of having, you know, corner pages of words, it really sort of, it gets at the key points and key connections of all the different areas. So, and again, we're hoping the RPC will provide some, you know, direction and guidance. So that's sort of the update. It's not a forgotten document, we're going to be working on it and we'll keep coming back to the commission with updates. And again, with the sustainability plan, I think that's coming along real well. We, you know, as Joanne probably talked, we had hosted two interns from Sustainable CT, and they are charged with working with all of our member towns to try to, you know, promote sustainable development or sustainable activities in their town. But also, in some of their free time, you know, not working with the towns, they work for us, and they started doing a lot of work that they did for the regional plan of sustainability. So, again, that's going to be a sort of a guiding document on that, that's coming together pretty nicely, so.
I guess my question to all of you is, are you really missing, it's not an excuse not to do it, but have you been missing the use of the regional plan of conservation and development in your work that you do in your municipalities? I mean, I guess the question is, how have you been reaching for the regional plan of conservation and development and saying, hey, it's out of date? I'm just wondering what, to what extent you're using it right now. And because I ask this because, this was a question, again, in the last few years when we've been trying to get this on, to get this going, we want this to be a useful document, you know, not something that, you know, it's really, why, it's kind of, it's hand-in-hand with the question of, you know, what does the COG do? And what is the work of the COG to the municipality? So I guess you don't have to answer it right now, you can answer it to me in an email if you'd like. But, you know, that's kind of, to me, that's the main question, is how do you make this a useful document, other than the state requires it? But other than that, how do you make it useful for everyone at this, in this forum and for our towns?
All right, well, we could all think about that, get back to it. I mean, quickly, my opinion is anything that's written seems to get to any planning commission or zoning commission, seems to be, gets looked at and then thrown on the side of the table, and it goes back to business as usual. Interaction, again, I'll go back to what I said before, interaction between the COG and the municipality is the key. This is a document that was put together, this is why it was put together, and it almost needs to have a face put together, and a face that's put together with it. And then if the planning zoning commission, you know, chooses, that face can actually have a dialogue with them. And I think that's the most effective way. I still believe in a little bit of outreach from both sides.
Yeah, thanks, Jim, I really appreciate your comments, thanks.
All right, so we'll move to item six, the discussion of the long-term recovery committees, local, regional, and the EDA grant. Anybody want to follow up on that, Joanne or Mark?
Yeah, so I'll start off. So this has been my main job is to, over the last few months, has been, the state had talked through the Demis Planning Regions, so there's five Demis Planning Regions, Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, Regional Emergency Planning Teams, and they have regions. The COG is part of three of those regions, region five, region two, and Bristol is in region three. So the state, I mean, when COVID hit, they, based on previous disaster response plans that has been through FEMA, the state said, hey, regional emergency planning teams, we need to focus on not just response, but long-term recovery. And they're working it through these long-term recovery committees, first of all, on the regional scale, through these five Demis regions. But they've also asked municipalities to form their own, you know, either single municipality or two or three municipalities come together and have these kind of small, more local long-term recovery committees. So these committees are focusing on a range of topics, from health and human services to education and technology, to jobs and business, to arts, culture and entertainment, recreation. And what the state has tasked these long-term recovery committees to do is to identify any and all unmet needs. Granted, it's just identifying them. And hopefully, at the, you know, when these long-term recovery committees, the regional ones, they have their own subcommittees with these specialties. And hopefully, when the long-term, the local committees come together and they identify some unmet needs, they can work through their committees to try to match a need with a resource and hopefully fill that unmet need. But if it's not getting done at the local level, that's when it goes up to the regional steering committee. This would be a lot more, I should have brought a slide, it's its own whole webinar on this stuff. And I'll send you some links to some webinars if you're interested in learning a little bit more. I mentioned the most important thing is, again, with you being municipalities, a lot of your towns have set up local long-term recovery committees specifically dealing with COVID. And that's what these long-term recovery committees are about. Mark had just mentioned in his previous discussion with the regional plan of conservation development, that there's been a lot of federal money that's become available for economic development, economic recovery in relation to the COVID public health emergency. So that's pretty much where the COGS are trying to work with the regional planning committees and also with the state long-term recovery committee. I know I've said a mouthful, Mark, do you want to add anything that might make it a little bit more clear?
No, I think you covered it pretty well. And again, the real key in all of this is because of, you know, Connecticut has 169 towns, we're very diverse, and a problem or an issue in one town may be totally different than what the issue was in another town. And so, looking at it from, you know, from the state level, they're never going to find out, you know, some of these specific problems or needs in some of the accounts. You know, and so the state, working through OPM and Department of Economic Development, EDC, economic and community development, along with Demis, you know, again, they've hired a consultant to sort of, you know, pull a lot of this information together. But the information that they're going to use is coming from the local community. And without that good information, so that's why we're going to be relying on these local committees to really, you know, drill deep and, you know, give us what, find out what the issues are, what the problems are. Because otherwise, you know, at the state level, you know, they may not know. We have a lot of anecdotal understanding of what's in the problem. Small businesses are really hurting. Minority-owned businesses, family-owned businesses, you know, they're just not able to deal with the types of issues that they've been faced with. You know, larger companies or larger businesses can sort of adjust, but, you know, some of the smaller ones have had a hard time figuring out how to even apply for some of the resources that may be available. You know, local restaurants, you know, when they had to go to outdoor seating, you know, if they didn't have that outdoor space, what were they going to do? I find arts and theaters are hurting, you know, because, you know, a lot of small, local theaters, you know, performing arts theaters, they can't do performances because, you know, they can't, and so they're going to be struggling, you know, how do we help them? So, but the real key is getting that information from the local, and then, you know, so we can bring it up to the region, and the region's bringing it up to the state. So it's going to be a long-term process. And we talk about long-term recovery, but the idea is also to come up with a way that we can adapt, that we can be more resilient to these kinds of problems that may occur in the future. So it's going to be a challenging one. And I think if Joanne provides any of the webinars that have already been held, I think everybody's still sort of feeling theirselves, you know, we're trying to feel ourselves out on how to, you know, cope with this. You know, I don't think anybody has the magic wand that can just make things all better. It's going to take a lot of trial and effort, trial and error, and, you know, a lot of effort on part of the local communities to really understand what's going on and try to get, you know, help to those who really need the help. More to come. But right now, like I said, the SEDC grant is a two-year grant. The state, you know, received CARES funding that has to be spent by the end of December, so they only have a three-month window to finish up a lot of the work. And then the statewide EDA grant, which we feel has been pretty well received by the regional EDA office in Philadelphia, we're likely to get that. And that's, it's a good chunk of change that would come to the states and we filter down to all the regions. So, and that's going to be a two-year grant, we're looking at starting in January. So this is not something that we're going to resolve quickly, it's going to be, it's going to take a couple of years.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
And if you do have any questions, or anybody in your towns have any questions related to COVID, do not hesitate to contact us. You know, if we don't know some of the answers, we'll get it for you. Early on, there were a couple of examples where some of the first electmen or mayors were wondering how to deal with this. And we may not know the answer, but we'll definitely work to get that answer for you. So in your contacts with anybody else in town, if they don't know, if they're complaining, oh, I need this, but I don't know how to go about doing it, and you can't answer it, come to us and we'll try to help.
That's great, that's great information. Okay, we'll move on to discussion of the transportation project. So you have alternate mode study, and then you have the Metro North Waterbury Branch Line.
Yeah, that's my two topics as well. I thought it'd be a good opportunity, when Joanne was asking about agenda items, to just do a quick little update of these two, well, actually, it's the same effort. The alternative mode study is focusing on Route Dayton, the Waterbury Branch Line. Again, that is really, the goal of that is to promote investment in the Waterbury Branch Line. It's underutilized now primarily because, you know, the service isn't really set up to, you know, accommodate travel needs of a lot of people. So our goal is to convince the state to invest in the line with new railcars, better service, more frequent service. And the opportunity for that is happening because the state actually invested about $100 million in upgrades to the signal system on the line. Right now, there are no signals. A positive train control, which has communication between the cab and the signals along the line so that we won't have conflicts where two trains are heading in the same direction on the same line. So that's positive train control. And then, in order to do fluid operations and allow bidirectional traffic, because it is a single-track line, they're putting in passing sightings at four locations. So right now, we run a train maybe once every two and a half hours. With all these improvements in place, you could conceivably run about six trains an hour. Now, we aren't expecting that kind of service, but it just means that we can get a lot better service than we currently have. So the alt modes is really looking at that and promoting that. And as part of the improvement in the train services, TOD opportunities in all the towns that host a train station. Gerby, Ansonia, Seymour, Nogatuck, Waterbury, Beacon Falls, you know, they all have land available near the train station. They have regulations in their zoning that would allow mixed use and higher density residential near the train station. So a lot of the TOD elements that you need... So the T, part of the TOD elements that you need are, are already in place. And what we keep trying to tell the state is what we're lacking is the, is the T. You know, that we need the better train service in order to really, uh, you know, serve as a catalyst for, for these kinds of developments. And again, talking with all our, our mayors, uh, they really see this as an economic development opportunity. Um, you know, between the, the, the downtowns that are small, they're, they're kind of quaint. There's a lot of nice architecture. They have the, the resources in place, you know, public water, public sewers, uh, to support higher density development. You know, they're, a lot of them are walkable now, um, and, you know, we see real great opportunities. Uh, as part of the study, the consultant will be reaching out to the host communities. That's, uh, Derby, and Sonya, Seymour, Beacon Falls, Nogatuck, and Waterbury to talk about TOD opportunities in a lot more detail and tying the potential for the economic development piece as well. So, um, they're going to be reaching out and holding a series of meetings probably in November. And again, uh, you know, obviously, everything's going to be virtual. And that's why we sort of put it off. We're kind of hoping to see if things clear it up and we could just meet in person, but it doesn't look like that. So, uh, CDM Smith is the consulting firm that's going to be handling these TOD outreach. So, um, you know, the meetings haven't been scheduled yet, but they've been reaching out to the towns. That's a, you know, quick, quick update of, of those two, two efforts.
Mark, I think, I think that the key, like you said, is the T, uh, to get that to the state. Because I, I know from the, the valley area, every valley town has been waiting and hoping that that branch line is improved. Everyone has included it in their, you know, town, uh, uh, plan development. And, you know, we're just, you know, looking forward to actually happen where we actually feel the benefit of it. Because without the best, without, we could do everything we want in our municipalities without the benefit. And the reality of it is nothing's going to work.
Right. I mean, Nogatuck is a prime example of that. I mean, they have, what, three large, you know, concrete pads that are just, you know, just there that used to be Uniroil's offices. And they can't get developers. Um, and, and they've had it, an opportunity, some developers come in and they, they ask about the train service. And when they find out it's not real good, convenient service right now, you know, they, 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 they block. Um, and they know the mayor's, you know, really feels that the better, better rail service, more frequent and, you know, those, those pads would be redeveloped. And I think the same thing in Seymour.
Well, Seymour Beacon Falls, we have an entire corridor that's looking to be owned already by a private developer.
Yeah, the Haines property.
Yeah, it's been looking forward to that. And I know, um, you know, moving down a little south, that Derby and Shelton is under a, a large, uh, residential apartment type boom. And Derby's looking to, you know, after all their, uh, deconstruction, they're looking for something that, you know, can put their reconstruction back in. I'd love to see the state move on this. They've been, they've been killing this forever.
Yeah, I, and, uh, I know, it's, 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 it is, and trust me, uh, we've been working really hard with the department and with the Office of Rails promoting this. Um, and they're, they're, they're starting to get the, the, well, they've heard the message. And I think they're starting to see the light that this could, could work. Um, and, and it's the valley's turn, if you want to put it in that regard. Uh, because they spent a lot of money on the Hartford line. Um, and, and that's had some real good success, you know, and some good development that's occurred around some of those stations. And I think the valley's been neglected for years. And I think, you know, that's sort of our argument too. It's like, it's time to really make that investment in, in, in the area. And, you know, we feel we can really generate some good economic development, like you said.
Okay, great. Um-
It's interesting. Uh, it's interesting that you're talking about the valley. You're really talking about only part of the valley. You're talking about the southern part, you're totally neglecting the northern part.
Well, in, in, in this, that's, you know, we're focusing in on the line. But, uh, even, you know, the, the mayor of, uh, the first electman of, of Thomaston, he's very supportive of this. And feels that, you know, the economic development occurs along the, the southern end of the line will help his town. Um, we, we'd love to be able to extend the line up into Thomaston, extend it up into Torrington. Uh, it, it, that line just needs so much work that that's a much longer timeframe. But, you know, we, we have had good support from other, you know, all the, all the mayors and first elect in the region. Uh, back in February, we had a, um, sort of a, you know, a summit, if you call it, you know, that was hosted in Nogatuck. And we had, I think, 15 of our 19, you know, mayors and, uh, mayors and first electmen of the 10 in all voice support for it. They know that benefiting, you know, the, the core of that, of that line, you know, would also have benefits that would flow into the other communities. So, uh, Watertown, Thomaston, Prospect, uh, we are all pretty much supportive of it. Oxford's, you know, they're, they're not on the line, but Oxford sees that, you know, a lot of their residents could use the service as well by traveling to Seymour. So, you, you, I mean, you're right. I mean, the, the line is oriented along, you know, it's only seven of our communities, but, um, the neighboring ones will also have to benefit from this, this work.
And I just want to add, I, I, I hear you, Bob. I think you've, you've mentioned this before, and I've heard it from other towns that are not exactly on the line. And I think part of the TOD opportunities, it, it was also, and also the alt mode study, it was about, you know, what different transportation models would work in different types of towns. So, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but I, I think there was also some model regulations, you know, what, and actually, this kind of touches upon what we're doing in the regional sustainability plan that we're, we're writing right now. You know, what works for an urban environment, what works for more of suburban environment? And I also think in terms of, I mean, it was a big accomplishment a few years ago when we got the Torrington to Waterbury, um, uh, bus line. Um, the bus route that actually stops in Thomaston, it stops, um, obviously Torrington, Thomaston. I think there's one, a couple of water, it might stop in Watertown if I, if I'm not making-
Um, no, I think it just goes from Torrington, Thomaston, and then to, into Waterbury.
But if, if we can think about alternative modes of transportation that would connect with that rail line, I think that's, that's one of the things that we're, we're actively thinking about.
Okay, great. Um, any other discussion on that topic? Okay, um, let's move to item eight, which you just added Joanna, is other. Do we have any others?
Earlier topic that was going to be brought up under other.
Yeah, there was, I just want to remind you, Jim, uh, earlier we were talking about, um, having a, um, like a show of hands maybe about, or, you know, a, a support for the elimination of notices in newspapers and just doing it, public notices for, um, meetings. I know a lot of that has been changed through, I believe, executive order in the last few months. And you wanted to have a, a, a motion for supporting it. Uh, please explain a little bit more.
Well, I think that, I think on that topic is, is it's just a, uh, probably just a decision of this committee to make a recommendation or, or at least express our, um, our opinion to, uh, the legislation that, you know, this would be a good thing. Whether they're going to do it or not, I know they, they always shelved the idea before. But, uh, at least, at least let it be one of the, at least a component.
I'm in a meeting right now online, maybe, and it's just not a good time to talk about. Can you send me anything by email about it or whatever?
Joanna, you're on mute again.
Yeah, if you guys could mute yourselves if you're, um, not speaking, that would be great.
Yeah, so that, that's it. I mean, is, is, are we prepared to, can we all make a, uh, make a resolution or a show of hands that would support, uh, a memo to our legislation? That we, uh, we would, uh, like to see that at least discussed as a possibility?
So what, can you, can you tell me exactly what the recommendation is? It's for, um-
That we, that we allow public notification for any public hearing to be done by the municipal website.
And eliminate the, eliminate the, um-
Eliminate, right, eliminate.
Well, in other words, continue the executive order that says you don't need to do it in a newspaper.
In a newspaper, right, right, exactly.
Kind of bring the wrath of the Republican American and voices, among others, down upon our shoulders.
Well, it's just, that's absolutely going to be true. And this has been brought up to the legislation before and they sided with the newspapers. But as you all know, and, I mean, the cost alone to put in a public notice is not, you know, $10, $12, $20. It's, they're charging $100, $200, $300 in cases of MAP. Um, it could be up to $500, $600. And it's not like there'd be a fair either. But I mean, I, I'm in favor of it. I mean, I don't know, you know, like, the way of the world. But again, it is what it is on that, uh, particular topic. And I'm, I'm in favor of it. Anyone, anyone?
I, I think it, yes, I think it should be debated. I mean, I understand that the, the newspapers don't want it because that's a large point. When their income is coming, it's stable for them. But a legal notice on the news, on the, on our website, you know, once you put it up, and it, and that stays until the public hearing is held. So I can, people can find out what's going on. And, and it, and it's not, because the, the thing with the newspaper is it runs on Saturday. And if you go into the internet now on the Saturday, you know, if you, if you have the newspaper in written form, you can always go through it and, and check the legal notices. But if you don't have that ability, you lose it if you didn't check it on Saturday. You don't, it's difficult to find it from again. And the newspaper used to be the, the internet is, and posting it on the website is the new, what the newspapers used to do in terms of, uh, going to find the, the, the announcement board.
I agree, and the whole point of a legal notice is to have that out there so all the public can see it, it's easily available. I know in Seymour, we don't, uh, we don't have a, um, daily newspaper. We have to rely on the voices, um, to meet the, the, uh, circulation requirements. But again, it's a, it's publication of a legal notice. It's done for a reason, not to, not to make the newspapers money.
I know it's a touchy, it's a touchy subject. It goes back and forth. There's, there's pros and cons either way, for sure. I kind of like it posted on a webpage, but, you know, you get older, people don't want to go to the webpages. It's-
Well, when you, when you think, when you think about it, these notices were fir- first posted in, on the town green, uh, and that's where everybody got it. There was no, there was nothing else. So step by step, we're, in a sense, going to the 21st century town green. I have no problem with it. I just threw that ins, in because, uh, you know, the, the power, if you will, that the press can still have on the legislators.
I, I, I agree, and Bob makes a good point where, you know, how it's evolved. And the, and the other thing is, we're making just a, an inquiry or making an opinion. It's the legislators who will ultimately decide this, I'm sure. But I mean, if we, if we feel that we want to make the, the one voice on this, we can do that.
Um, may, may I make a recommendation?
Sure.
So why don't I make a draft of a memo? And, uh, I will do that in the next couple of weeks. You guys can all take a look at it, everyone in the, our regional planning commission, and give me your feedback. And at the next meeting, you can vote on recommending it. How does that sound?
I would also suggest that it also be sent to the Connecticut Planning Association.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, uh, Mark?
I'm saying that it also should be sent to the Connecticut Planning Association.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Because that, we have our, we have our committee, the Planning Association, does have lobbyists that go talk to the committees at the, at the legislature. Sounds kind of dirty, but it's not. I mean, you know, it's people that talk, express the point of view. And, and the point is, this is a public forum. And, but it is a, unless, it is a one-sided public forum in the sense that if you don't have the internet, and some people, many people don't, and we've gotten to that critical, uh, number that so many people do have internet access, that we forget that there are people who don't have. And that puts them at the disadvantage. Uh, you can go to the library and look at it there. I mean, there are other ways around it, but not everybody orders a newspaper either.
All right, well, let's, let's, Joanna, let's put that draft together like that. We'll pick it up again and then we can, uh, we could, uh, actually make a, a vote on that. Okay, anything other on item eight? No, no, no final comment? Joanna, do you have anything? I see you're on mute again.
Uh, no, I didn't have anything else right now.
All right, so item nine, so the motion to adjourn?
No, moved.
All right, is the motion second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll look forward to seeing you again.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Hey, healthy.
Good night.
Good night.
What did you say, Joanna?
Did you make the first motion?
Uh, I believe Bob did.
Okay.
All right, good night.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Okay, good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Night.